Yeah, that's what I love about COVID.
But I love that school. Like I think that they're doing an end that I met their instructor.
Yeah, we just started her. She was a teacher at one of my schools.
She used to wait on me and.
Do that.
She remembers my parents and their white faces. She was like, you used to bring them in there that would run around. I was like, yeah, I'm not checking that.
Like, her sister lived in high school. She's about six seconds.
I mean, super sweet and really seemed to understand the dynamics of the school, which I've never seen anybody.
Yeah, I went in for three years.
Yeah, she gets it. Well, you said she grew up here? Where did she go? So she went to South.
Well, I think she graduated from Madison.
Well, and been out there for years, looking before the school closed, after the store.
Yeah, it was. I'll just say that after what happened this.
I'm just trying to improve.
It was a good reminder of why we did what we did, for me to spend about forty-five minutes at the school. So hopefully. But that was. Nobody else in here would have to say Morris.
I can help you need more, I can show. There's hundreds of them. They're all around. I love to see a lot of them.
No, not on that old, open, empty. Where's the rest of them? I know Ken and Say is probably.
Cam had a friend committing.
Well, because he has to pick up his son, and the son's at Roseville this year, and he can't ride a bus because he got there through O. D. One, so he has to go to come up. My kids just got home from school and instantly everyone has a bad attitude, so. I'm glad we have another meeting after this one, so I don't have to come on.
I don't know if something is there, but my girlfriend was telling me, saying something to me about her granddaughter, and she's like, I just can't understand it because where did she get it from? We're not like that, but they're having.
Just let me know when it's my time.
I think my girls are just tired. Like, we didn't do a very good job this summer. Like, we stayed up late every night, and we slept till ten o'clock, and it's just cool. We didn't really have a routine or schedule, so I think my girls.
So they have to get back into school.
We had a tough time. Can you imagine my children being like, oh, yes, Morris?
We used to do that. She took her to use it.
I know. No, and he's helping us. No, he's.
So glad I'm not saying why I want to do everything, everything.
Is she really?
I'm a terrible person.
Where's she?
She's in. That's okay.
I'm surprised it's in mine. You know what? I'm. She works at the school?
I think.
In Crockett County? Does she live?
She is appropriate place. I don't know, maybe she's on.
How is?
I think it's all the time. No, no, certainly.
I don't know. His sister. You're wrong. I'm just saying, most everybody I know from over there. I'm just saying. How long she look at her?
Oh, they're still there.
Does she have, like, kids and stuff? Does she have kids?
Oh, I don't have. I got Redson. Redson is fourteen, but Redson, I can't.
Oh. Where are that? Well, what, what, I mean, obviously, that fourteen.
Woody is in Crockett County. Redson. Just finished.
Oh. Did he like it there?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's like the largest. They have the largest undergraduate. Yeah, and they have, they have more, they have more undergraduates than any other school.
Last year I wrote with.
Oh, do you know who's out here?
I'm wrestling again.
Yeah, yeah.
I was with Nurse David Mary in the team at Carson County. That's where the, I was with, what's the county?
Yes. Um, our.
Relative.
Okay.
I just.
So just Kevin, we're waiting on Kevin.
I'm gonna move to a table.
Please move, come on. Alex, you can sit at the table.
Eyeball. People need eyeball.
Okay, well, you cannot eyeball me.
Please sit at the table and just hug it.
Why not do this?
Okay, do that, maybe I'll wake up.
What are you doing there?
Merry weather.
Just so Paul's sleeping.
Let's sit here, put the camera on. I make some news.
That's why I'm lying.
Mine's me.
Which is a little over one.
It just sounds like years, doesn't it?
I'll text you.
It's, uh.
Well, I'm so. Did y'all both plan to wear orange? Mm-mm, no.
No, no conference on that.
It's happening, I guess. Hey, while we're waiting on Kevin, can you, since, um, I didn't make it to your meeting this morning, what, what did y'all decide on your, on the vacant buildings?
Passed on first reading.
Okay.
Um, and so we go to second reading in September, and that is focusing on our subdevelopment areas, downtown, uh, Omen Arena area, Airways, Old Hickory Mall area, and down to, um, Passive Fairgrounds. And it's, uh, focusing on Marshall and Industrial Villas, and, uh, getting a, a local person that we can contact, because right now we have several buildings that are LLCs out of state, and we have no local person to have contact with. So getting that person on the books, and, uh, if they don't have a plan, if there's no development going on, they're not selling it at market value, we're trying to rent it at market value, then they go into the registry and they have to pay an additional fee outside of property taxes escalated for five years. And so, you know, this, my hope is, we will collect the money, and we, and we can encourage development, and we get people in buildings and businesses in buildings and.
Well, I hate, uh, we don't serve those kind of drinks here, Alex. I hate to disappoint you.
I'm gonna have to go get some water.
But I, but I, I like that idea for the sole purpose of, like, I mean, we have some out of town property owners that don't care about.
We have one building over in Mall Area, it's been vacant for, it's gone on twenty years now.
Yeah.
They've noted real opportunities, even when they try to go in and rent, so.
I, and I noticed, can I just do a few? I looked at some property, because I, I worked in T for about seventeen years, and I decided, maybe I should just do that. And to get your wholesale, like, your sell slices, I mean, they are really inexpensive, and, uh, I don't know, I was just thinking maybe the city would, I said, oh, I could do this, but the city was losing money because anyplace else it's much more. Yeah, so, uh, you can just look at that. I think that's just.
We're a new business, and I think the revenue process on sales tax and on, you know, property taxes and property taxes, so.
I'm kidding.
This is, uh, this is very easy entry market.
It is very easy. I was like. It was shocking as a matter of fact, to me.
Are you kidding me?
Before.
We don't wanna be the reason someone that has a business.
Well, it's very economic.
While we're waiting on Kevin, uh, in case they ask, uh, of a scheduled meeting, we've got one later also. We're going to get started when Kevin comes in, and I just, uh, I'll turn it over again. Uh, we'll, uh, open up, and I think about attending, uh, for the, uh, silent, uh, moment, please. Thank you. Our meeting, uh, with, uh, Mayor Conger is going to be informal. What we, uh, plan to do is, uh, go around and have introductions, and what I'd like to do is start with the, our guests first. Uh, introduction, introduce who you're with, you know, school board members, uh, introduction in the district you represent, uh, I'll give a couple of, uh, open comments. And if Kevin's out here, I'll turn it over to Ray, so he can, uh, give us, uh, one of the overview, or anything concerning the food system, uh, what's going on, particularly Madison, and then we'll turn it over to the mayor. We start over here, and, uh, introduce yourself and who you're with.
I'm LaShara, I'm on the Jackson, so I'm the education reporter.
Turn it. Introductions.
Call me Goff.
If you're with, I'm County Commissioner. Barbara Johnson, County Commissioner.
Jared Maracle, Chief Academic Officer for the District.
Steve Beverly, West Tennessee today.
Ally Mason, I'm with the. I'm Sheena Stewart, and I represent District Five, in which Mayor Conger moved out of. Um, about, about a year and a half ago, and I'm still mad at him about it. He used to be my neighbor, but he's not anymore.
She hides it so well. She really hide anything too.
Uh, Agent Massey, I'm District Four.
Ray Washington.
I'm Janet Staggs, School Board Secretary.
Yours, like, District Four.
Morris Maxwell, District Six.
Alex Reed, I work for the mayor.
I'm Pete Johnson, for District One. Um, just to get, uh, jumped on, our meeting basically won't, uh, uh, board administration wanted to, uh, start giving you a chance to come and, uh, meet you and, um, reinforce the partnership that we've already, uh, developed, uh, with the city. And Kevin, with the city, uh, already, uh, especially, uh, not you, because she's been, uh, you actually, uh, on part of taxes with, with years and years. Uh, I think we kinda hit a hiccup when, uh, the city, uh, backed off some of those back dollars. Uh, but I think we've, uh, hopefully we worked through that, uh, and I think with the partnership that we have, uh, uh, with the private partner, uh, private public, uh, with Madison, JCM, kind of reinforced, and hope, uh, heal some of those old wounds. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin, next down there, our, uh, board chair, for any comments, and there, of course, uh, you'll, for any, uh, comments, especially.
Well, I, I just wanna say, I wanna thank you for coming, that you could listen today, and, uh, I think the majority of the boards here, I know Jim, uh, said he wouldn't make it.
Wayne just texted me and said he's stuck at work, but he said he's catching it online. I don't know. Are you live? Okay, thank you.
We can watch it. I just wanna say thank you for coming and having this time with us, and, and I'll turn it over to you, let you say whatever you'd like to say, starting off with, and.
I thought we were gonna come to Ray, he's gonna do, hopefully, first, even though that's.
Sure, that'll work. Right. Alright, so, uh, you mentioned, uh, uh, Board Member Johnson mentioned, uh, overview of Madison, uh, and so, last week, we met with the administrators from Madison, along with the architectural firm, to continue to outline the design of the building, and if it's on, uh, the land of campus. So as soon as those things are more furnished up, uh, the administration, doing some different things, and some changes to the plans, those plans can be made public, uh, they wanna put something out there, they continue to change it back and forth, so, at that point, they'll be reviewed by anybody who wants to see them and review them, along with JCM, same thing going on. So we had planned review, and we get to the final stages of the plans, um, how we wanna build those projects out, so, uh, like I said, we, uh, we have the architectural firm administrators, uh, from various high schools to cover JCM, but specifically Madison administration, and how it relates to the facilities and the landmark that will be used. So we'll be using their theater, their gymnasium, uh, sometimes their chapel, um, and some other things, their library, sometimes, although we'll build a library at the school, we'll have access to their library also, uh, and things of that nature, so we're just trying to tie all that together.
I think that's great, and, and I just wanna reinforce that the city's moving to the public-private partnership, and, um, yeah, I think you're all aware that the Comptroller approved the balloon payment, um, that's something that we, I think, have to take to council over the next couple of months, just to get them to put their stamp of approval, only Comptroller's approval, so that's, that opens the doors for the New Market Tax Code opportunities, which I know enough about to be dangerous, so, um, deep diving that, um, I think it's a great opportunity for, for us to move forward with some buildings that are falling down, uh, reopen some schools that, um, that need to be reopened, and, and have a, a real connectivity in, in the heart of our city, which I think we've seen some great development, but there's, obviously, a lot more opportunity for redevelopment in those areas, uh, especially around the JCM area, and I think that'll, having that school back would be a catalyst in, in that redevelopment.
May I ask a question? It's, it's basically, uh, all of us based on the new thing that.
Well, the Comptroller had to approve that, so that's, that's something the Comptroller, only, the only thing he's worried about is, is finances, so he just had to approve that for the municipality to do.
Okay, so I'm saying, it's basically all finance.
Yeah, on his part now, I think there's still, um, healthy community, they're still working with the, the New Market taxpayers, see what they can do to.
Yeah, that part, yeah. But the Comptroller had to approve. We all went up there a couple of months ago, and he went, and he expressed what his concerns were, and then we addressed those concerns, and he approved the, the deal.
Yeah, I think, since then, from a city standpoint, we have a new finance, accounting, budgeting director, um, have a, uh, a budget committee that's looking at refunding some of our debt opportunities, and reducing our overall debt obligation, and so when that balloon payment comes down, then it won't be such a, a task, a tax on us to be able to pay that, because we're gonna, we're gonna reduce that, that payment all along, and then hopefully, refinancing some of our debt, the lower interest rate, some variable rates and fixed rates.
Scott, do you think that that led to, like, like with your administration coming in and kind of setting up, especially the budget committee and kind of reevaluating things, do you think that that led to Comptroller to his decision?
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, well, I mean, I mean, if I were sitting in your seat, if I were sitting in your seat, I would say yes too, but I mean, as a citizen, it seems like.
I think that ball was in motion before.
Okay.
Yeah, it started several months ago.
Well, I mean, I, go ahead and take credit for it.
There's a brown jumper on that parade, just kinda walking. But I think we're, we're gonna be in a, a better position financially to handle that balloon payment once it comes, and help the banks for, for the leasing, um, term as well, so.
I have a question, uh, Todd. You mentioned, uh, uh, some of the possible economic development around JCM. I know that, uh, a lot of the cities that have developed have been mostly downtown, the left, uh, downtown area, that type thing. Uh, have you had an opportunity, I know, during your campaign, I mean, you talk a lot about supporting public education, but as far as the economic development around Lane, uh, JCM, uh, have you thought about anything specific in that area?
So I think what, what we're working on now is, is making sure we get there. Um, yeah, rural streets are blocked off right now. Um, what we've done, you know, as far as the infrastructure, make it desirable for people to come in and create economic opportunities are prioritizing our streets. Um, you know, in the past, as you example, uh, you know, everyone else on the council, they give you, every council, we have two streets in their district, no matter what they were, you get two streets. One, one year had a street about as long as this table, just 'cause there's a street, it didn't really need it, but they, they paid.
It wasn't mine, I can say that.
And so, I've had the city engineer to go through and prioritize from one to ten, ten being just, just asphalt laid down last year, and one being, not dirt road stacks, you know, just making sure, and so, we're putting in this year our capital budget, two million dollars more than we've had in the past, and so, we're gonna look at having twenty-five percent of our priority one and two streets resurfaced every year, so in the first four years, we'll have all number one and two priority streets resurfaced, and it's starting a rotation that way. And so, having that infrastructure in place, making it more desirable. Um, obviously, when you get a new school, people tend to move around that new school, so you get rooftops there, um, I mean, that helps the economic development, so, you know, businesses go where rooftops are, they're gonna go where they can make money, at the end of the day. Uh, we can't make a, a business set up anywhere, they're gonna go where their, their bottom line's gonna be best for them, and so I think if we get that development, get the rooftops there, uh, get some neighborhood revitalization, we're also working right now with short-term Vista programs, we're applying for a grant this fall, we're applying for the program, not really a grant, and it'd be an eight-week short-term Vista, it's a team of eight come in here, uh, we're asking them to do, uh, pocket parks in East and South Jackson, and so utilizing some of our inventory of vacant properties that we have, and green spaces, pocket parks, to help just enhance that neighborhood revitalization as well.
I mean, will you find that out?
We will have to apply by October first, I believe, and we'll find that start of the year, so they, when they come, it'll be sometime the time frame between February fifteenth and middle of April, they tell us when they come for those eight weeks.
They just come, they do it?
They do it, we provide, you know, any training they may need, they'll have some training with some small equipment, so someone will have licenses to work, excavators and things. Um, the only thing that we have to provide is the, um, anything that's gonna go in the park, and the tools to work with, and, and a place for them to stay for those eight weeks with the kitchen and showers.
Okay, I have a lot of questions about that, but not right now.
They're gonna be at your house for eight weeks, I'm sure.
I mean, they can, they don't want it around. They just have to share a bathroom with the gypsies who live upstairs.
Is that a master plan around the JCM?
That's one of the subdevelopment areas in the city, master plan is passed in two thousand fifteen, and so, uh, you look at what the city's gonna provide, you know, the master plan's great, um, it, it looks at the development in all the subdevelopment areas, you know, money's gonna solve everything for that, we don't have a plan to pay for it, and so, that's what we're working on now, with our budget committee, how can we free our resources, so we're not borrowing the money to do the basic necessities of street resurfacing, so we can free up some funds to really start the redevelopment of our, our focus areas of downtown Airways, uh, Omen Arena area, Old Hickory Mall area, and so those, those are the focus areas in the master plan, but we gotta have, and they just gotta have money to be able to write the check.
Exactly. Uh, also, with the development process, will, uh, local people in those communities be able to, um, maybe pick up some jobs in the process?
Well, I think anytime you go into development, and you start having subcontractors and contractors come in, they're looking for, for employment, um, you know, June numbers came out, we're at four point two percent unemployment in Madison County, uh, we jumped up because we had almost two thousand people enter the workforce, and the numbers stayed about that amount increase, so, um, you know, we, we have jobs, I mean, reality is, jobs are available, we have three hundred manufacturing jobs right now that need to be filled. Um, I don't know the last number that needs to be filled, or what's gonna be filled, but we have jobs available, we just gotta do our part and make sure that people get there, we can remove the barriers for people to get employed.
Are there any plans for the Old Hickory Park? What are we gonna do with that?
We gotta fix a big hole in the parking lot first.
Huge hole in the parking lot.
It's supposed to be underground, Charlie.
Well, it may just get to where the owner just slips off in that hole, it's an underground arena, I don't know.
That's creative.
But, you know, we, we're doing the best we can with it. We have several large events that are committed, we have a company out of Arizona that has signed a long-term contract to come in and do bull riding, and I think bull riding's a big thing.
It is a big thing.
And so, we got, uh, so we got the, the number five bull rider in the nation is from, uh, west, east, west middle Tennessee somewhere, and so he's putting his name on the, on the event this year to get a bigger draw, uh, we still partner with Lane College, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a public venue that, at the end of the day, if we break even on it, I consider those public venues a success.
I mean, Madison students use that building every day for P E classes.
Madison uses it, Lane uses it for basketball games.
And we lease it for Madison and Early College, um, for P E and basketball, probably.
Ray, what happens to the Madison building? What's Madison moves?
Uh, the city, city, it's a city building.
Okay.
And there are other interested parties in that building, for I understand, going way back, uh, that people are interested in that building, so, I don't think that building, um, when we're successful with moving Madison to Land of will stay, they.
I don't know, yeah, I just.
But actually, because it's in the city limits, it goes to the city, but I already know the CRA, and that organization has some interest in it, in some programs that they would like to institute in it, so, that's as much as I knew about it, because initially, that same interest was in JCM, but then they moved their interest in like Madison even better, when all this stuff started to unfold, uh, they preferred probably to be up there.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's, you know, one thing I'm hoping for is that bottom floor of Madison, have a senior citizen center there, um, and a community center for activities, and be, uh, another public venue that, that has opportunity for people to utilize that for a community center aspect.
That auditorium is beautiful. I mean, it's just so pretty. I was in there yesterday. It's so beautiful.
You look at Madison Town, we have one senior center out in Huntersville, and, um, that's just, you gotta figure gas tank companies to get out there, and so it's not feasible. Yes, yeah, and, uh, you drive, you think you've gone too far and turned left?
I wouldn't even know where it is. Well, why? Just keep driving?
I'd be excited to suggest that I have, you know, maybe to Dr. Jones, well, and I am from Washington, uh, for the fact I graduated there in nineteen sixty and a half, I just think that we, we could use a portion of that for, um, museum.
Oh, that's a fantastic idea.
For Madison.
Madison, Madison, and, uh, I don't know what, how much of it is usable, but it would make an excellent, um, museum for, for that, because, just watching that talk about Jackson High Men's Biards and J C, Old JCM. Yeah, Jackson, there's some Jackson High, and then Mary High stuff is at, uh, T R White, and then we have JCM stuff at JCM, and Madison has their own collection now, that some of it could go, so, but it could be a transition over the years of memorabilia.
And I've, I've actually heard, uh, not specific to the high schools, but I've heard, uh, something along the lines of civil rights museum for this area, 'cause there's a, there's a pretty deep history with civil rights, Jackson was the, uh, mediation location.
Yeah.
It was, it was where everybody played nice for years, and it could come in the evening.
When you talk about that auditorium, that auditorium, uh. Cause of what's to do with.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See videos, all of that.
Actually, Scott, I had a conversation with Lauren Kirk, who's on your staff, about that, about, 'cause I know she's done a lot of work with, like, historical preservation and grants and, and researching, and I know she's very passionate about civil rights history, specifically to our community, um, I hate to task her with the job, but.
She, she's been doing research already on, on what it would take to make that stop on the civil rights trail.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I mean, I think that we, that was caught right in line with that.
Is she working with Cindy Boyle?
Yes, 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 she is.
Yeah, we actually, Lauren and I had, had lunch with Cindy three, four weeks ago.
Okay. Listen, if you have not met, which Alex, if you haven't met Alex, you need to meet Alex, but if you've not met Lauren Kirk, who works in Mayor Conger, you have to meet her. She's like one of the smartest people I've ever met my whole life.
Scott, what about the, uh, Lincoln Building? Any, uh, thought?
There are, there are, I've had some folks reach out that are interested in kind of the same, same area of, of a community center, um, James Teas was the one who reached out to me a few months back about that, I haven't had a conversation with him probably in four months, um, but I think if it's, if it's a viable use, and we can make sure and, and keep it operational, and add value to the neighborhood, then, I'm all for whatever adds value. I don't wanna have a building open just to have a building open, we wanna make sure we're adding value to the area that, that building's in.
So when does that transition take place? So, because, um, we just told you, are we, at that point? I think, um, around September, we'll make sure that everything's out of there that we don't need, and we'll be talking to the city at that time, make sure it's totally transitioned, which I believe it is now. So sometimes we're down at the end of the year. But there's still stuff that we need to get out of there that has some use for, maybe not at the new Lincoln, but at other schools, they may have a use for. But until the entire amounts of county have control. Yeah, school.
Yeah, the school, we have control of it.
School system has control of it, so we'll make sure the grass is cut and everything.
Custodial rights over.
Right, and then, um, we'll be talking to the city about the transition, so this is my first time doing that, so, you know, I'll just work through the phases within the mayor's office to make sure we do it properly for that.
My first time doing it, so.
I got a guy that can help you out.
You have a guy, huh? I believe that, Alex.
I think you were talking about the new Lincoln, you know, that's really amazing, I, I spent about two hours in the area of Lincoln today, looking at different things the city can do with, helping with some of the light in the area, and so we're, that, that's ramping up.
Was that gonna be your next question?
No, we had talked about.
Yeah, we talked about.
Oh.
I was pointing out all the abandoned houses near it that I want to acquire, to love it, to make the campus more. Then we hear, then we hear that, that you're looking at.
Well, I, I can tell you, when we, Alex rode with me over to the ribbon cutting, and, and he has to pass, every time we pass his property.
I'll turn into a blind guy.
You do acquire the ones that will definitely do the right thing, you know, claim and make them more appealing, um, so, we wanna do it.
And that's the goal for us. We, we, we don't want something that's gonna take down the neighborhood, we have an opportunity through, through COs enforcement, or if it's through our B E P program, light elimination program, uh, and we can make sure that we can bring the area up, and enhance what you all are doing with, with the schools, and that's what we're, we wanna make sure that everything that we're doing around schools is gonna complement what you're doing at that.
Well, the, the billboard that is at the door, and, uh, I think it's the bar, if anybody owned that billboard, um, is no audience, uh, guests advertising beer they go to the school?
It's a great question. I don't know what to ask you right now. I'll go back and look at the ordinance. I think we'll check on.
Cause there's, over those signs, they had beer advertising that's off a coast to the school.
Off to the school.
And then, then the businesses setting.
Morse, where are you talking about? Walk me, walk me through in the mind where we are.
The billboards that's on the north, you know, we've come off of next to Whitehall School. Then there's another little bit further up on the right-hand side.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Advertising beer. And then, of course, worse than that, we have a beer establishment right there on, near on the campus.
And it's the thing across the, yeah, across the street, yeah.
And I mentioned that and somehow the word got back to the owner of that place.
Imagine that.
I don't blow that up for the coast. My question is, isn't that an audience against that?
You know, I don't think there is currently right now, because if I'm thinking back to Lane Express, when J C M was open, you had Lane Express right there, it sold beer in Lane College.
Yeah, yeah. Lane Express is now actually owned by.
Owned by the college, huh?
Yeah.
But now if there's not one on the books.
No, they don't. No, they do not.
I, I think that would be a tall hill to climb. That'd be something to look into. I think you start missing somebody's business at that point and that, that has been there for, you know, for several years and that creates a little problem.
I, I see it on the record. It's just too close for our kids. I mean, even if I own a business there, I shouldn't get upset because I'm that close to a school.
You shouldn't, but.
But they do.
Well, yeah, and you look at the advertise, I, I think back over, the billboard over Gold's Gym always has beer on it. And so you're going to a gym to get healthy, you walk out and see a billboard with beer on top of it.
I don't go to the gym.
It's all that.
He's trying to drive by now, but.
But anyway, in reference to the, um, the billboards, I just think that's a sense of dignity. Need to close, so if you're looking to that.
And you know, that's also one of the things that, that is in our master plan that hasn't been tackled yet on, on sign codes. And, and what our, changing our sign codes and what that looks like to, to make it not so uniform with the signs at the same level all the way down and it looks very industrial. I think we can do some, some things created down the road to make sure that we're, we're enhancing the buildings, we're enhancing the beautification of the neighborhood. And, you know, if it's already there, it's a little hard to take away, then it's a little easier for people from getting there than it already being there. So, we can, we can look into that. Maybe some, may just be easy as a conversation with Lamar saying, hey, can you just.
I, I don't know him, but I'm pretty sure he would be understanding.
Can you just change your, change your sign somewhere?
So, I, I don't think it's something we're trying to put anybody out of business or we trying to make them change the sign. I think the fact that Lincoln has, has a movement, has been a rebirth for the community.
Absolutely.
And we need all we can do to modify the area.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a call with Lamar and see, see what the options are.
I'm not talking.
Barbara's in class, yeah.
Of course, being on the county commission, not, wasn't my concern, but I know that the city used to help us financially. So, my concern is about money. Do you, do you plan to provide a help us with the budget offer before I have any idea of putting anything back money-wise into the school system?
I mean, the city still puts in a portion of sales tax revenue. And I think, you know, we, we have the agreement that the county and the city signed two years ago for, for funding for an education foundation. Once there gets to a certain threshold of sales tax revenue. I mean, the city's putting in twelve million dollars for a new school. That's a, that's a pretty good chunk. And so, you know, I've said all along, I think working with the superintendent's office where it makes sense, if we have the resources, then, then we can add value in certain places. But, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, I think we, I can't give you the numbers we put in through our, our city's sales tax. But I think we can find better, direct, concise ways to add value to the school system than just putting in a general fund.
Well, Scott, you said a lot of, of things about this school system during your campaign. And you said, you, you related the relationship to the city and the school system as a.
Divorced dad paying child support.
And the very first time I heard you say that, I was like, that makes so much sense.
With no role in the parenting plan.
Yes. And so I feel like you actually sitting around this table with us and asking us questions and allowing us to ask you questions. And also being willing to answer our phone calls and our emails and I think that's a step in the right direction. And so thank you for that. And thank you for actually holding true to your promise that you do want to be involved. And like, we don't wanna forget that the city is spending twelve million dollars to build us a new school. But what do you see, and I'm, and I'm not saying we're gonna put you on the record as any committing to anything, but like if money. I know, I know. You know, I like to put you on the spot, but if you.
Zoomed in right now.
Well, Scott, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I did, this is for ideas.
Why would I?
Sounds minded.
Sure. But, but, yeah, and so answer her question, what do you see your relationship being? Because I don't want you to be a divorced dad just paying child support to our school system. Because I know that in a couple of years, you're gonna have some kids who are in our school system. And so you're gonna have a little bit more skin in the game.
God bless that teacher.
I know. Um, but if, if money were not an issue, okay, we're gonna, I need you to step outside of your box for just a minute. I know it's hard for you to do sometimes, but if you could dream about how the city could partner with the school system. And I'm saying like, nothing's off the table. If money weren't an issue, if we had just tons of money coming in our city. Which I think we're headed in a direction where our city is growing. I think that we're seeing things happen. Where I think in the next ten to fifteen years, we'll see some tremendous growth in our city. Where do you see the city playing a role in becoming more involved with the school system?
I think, I think that relationship and role is a, is a direct relationship between the mayor's office and superintendent's office. And, you know, having that relationship, working on how the city can add value. I'm not gonna pretend to be a superintendent, I'm not gonna pretend to be a school board member.
Thank you, thank you.
But I think following the lead of the superintendent and if, you know, if it's ready for the next ten years and they find another one ten years from now, keep him hooked for ten years on that. And he says, I think the city could add value if it's a technology initiative, if it's a capital improvement, if it's a track, I mean, whatever it may be. And the city has the ability to, to step in and partner with the school system to make that happen. And I think that's where the relationship needs to be. I don't think, I think we really handcuff ourselves if I say, the city's gonna do X, Y, Z forever and ever amen. I, I think as that relationship works together with the superintendent's office on, on where the value can be added. If it's project wise, if it's for initiatives, however that looks. I do wanna say to Ray, thank you. My mother-in-law's a school bus driver, twenty-six years. She got a bus for the first time in all of how long that has the, the engine out front and not next to her. It has air conditioning blows on her shoe. So, she's, she's.
She's up great now.
She's great.
She got a new bus.
Well, Scott, I, I was just telling you, we can have a much better relationship, you know, because do things in the past, the relationship can.
I, I, I think we can't have a relationship without me writing the check.
Yeah, I'm lying to you. Yeah. I guess I'm not talking about this much.
Right. But you are talking about the money.
I mean, relationship to make our school system.
And I think we, we all have to have the same vision, the same goal. We want our superintendent to succeed. We want our kids to succeed. And whatever that looks like, whatever that partnership is, as long as we're walking on the same direction, then we can make where things happen.
So, Scott, what I'm hearing you say is that if Ray and us as a board said, we have this idea, this initiative, we, that we think is a good idea. You're saying we can pitch it to the city to see if they could be involved either.
Now, are we still living in the world where money's not an issue?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're still living in that.
But what I'm saying is, you, what I'm, what I feel like you're saying and what I feel like I'm hearing is you're saying you want to be approachable. You want to be, you, you want to be a player in what is happening with the schools.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll speak to that. One idea that I've had just before I even came in this position. So, if we're fortunate enough to build a new school, K eight out north, okay? A partnership with the city and the school system for a playground area that can be shared. That's an easy way to have a relationship to start off with. So, where that school will be built, near the location, has a playground area for the neighborhood. Okay? That's an easy way that we can partner with you. You could partner with us to do something good for both sides.
Absolutely.
I love that idea.
Well, that's just, those type of thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, where, you know, you may have to contribute a little, we got the space, we gonna do so much, but we can make it broader than just a playground for the school. We can have it for the, for the, for the community also.
And to, to, to use your analogy of divorced dad paying child support, divorced dad paying child support, no input in their parental plan is, is a tough situation. But that dad can still buy school supplies, they can buy clothes for the kid, right? I mean, they can, they can support the kid in other ways and that's kind of the way I view this. So, that leads me to, and I, obviously not gonna hold you anything, but I think we all are a fan of neighborhood schools. And if we could snap our fingers and make us all have neighborhood schools, I think we would do that. But I, the new, I, one thing I noticed going down to the new Lincoln, those streets are crazy. I mean, there's cars driving, I parked across the street. I didn't know we had V I P parking. I parked across the street. Yeah, I parked across the street. But, but I mean, sidewalks, street lights, things like that. It's actually, uh, street lighting, not, not a, not a stoplight, uh, things like that, that I know has been proposed by people that ran for office in the past as a way to partner with our schools. Anything we had looked at, I appreciate the removing blight. I appreciate the, the possibility of, of giving us some properties and, and hats our, our properties. But when you go to, I mean, I'm just using Montessori cause my wife works there and she mentioned that. She said it just, it's just, it's just warms your heart to see a dad walking with their kid to school. I mean, that's just like, go back in time a few decades and that's what happened everywhere. So, as much as we can replicate that, and I think that's a great, I mean, I look at all those cross streets, there should be sidewalks in everyone.
It should be scary.
It is. And, well, and just to encourage, cause I grew up on a street with a sidewalk and it was busy all the time. Moved to West Tennessee, no, there's no sidewalks anywhere. And so everybody's on the street and it's just dangerous. And so it just encourages participation in the community, it encourages neighborhood pride. So, has there anything been like that thought about?
Yeah, I mean, walkability is a, is a huge initiative we're looking at now. And with our, our capital plan, we're hoping to, so take the Montessori and then some over in East Jackson. You go down one block, there's sidewalks. Then you got a block with no sidewalk. Then you got a block with sidewalks, there's no continuous sidewalks. And so we're, we're starting to, to look at that and really nail down on where those, where those holes are and how we can start filling those holes. Because, I mean, sidewalks aren't cheap either. So, where we can have the, the lowest hanging fruit, make the biggest impact with continuous sidewalks right now. Not, maybe not doing another whole mile of sidewalks in a neighborhood that doesn't have any, but plugging the holes where there aren't continuous sidewalks now. You want C R A money? Well, it is for infrastructure improvements. It has to follow the ma, the master developer's plan. And so those go along with the development of, of the properties that they do, whether it be commercial, whether it be residential properties, those go along there. You don't just plug in sidewalks half agilely. So, the focus that we're gonna have through our engineering department, the street department is plugging those holes with those continuous sidewalks. One that pops in my head off the top is on Lambeth, you gotta right past Arlington and you have a quarter mile of no sidewalks. I mean, I used to live on West Morris, I was there every day. So, just finding those, those holes and how we can do it. We also, you know, the city itself is under.
It is right in the heart of my district.
Seventeen more years of N A D A compliant lawsuits. So, we had to put in X number of linear feet of ramps and cut-ins and sidewalks and repair sidewalks from, from the linear feet that was in the lawsuit. So, we got, we got roughly half a million dollars we gotta put into that every year. That didn't even count building new sidewalks.
Scott, I don't want to put you on the spot here. What do you.
Everybody else.
How do you feel?
He's used to me putting him on the spot.
How do you feel about?
See what you started, Barbara?
All right, Scott, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Oh, Barbara, he's.
What you going to?
He's, he's fine.
I'm saying I am gonna put you on the spot. And this is not.
I mean, I, I just think Scott is right.
I agree.
Well, you know, Lambeth was able to close some streets around Lambeth under the guise of state student safety. Uh, what, what are your thoughts about closing Lane Avenue to close off the campus? For, I mean, that's a main thoroughfare for their students. It's just flat out dangerous, in my opinion, uh, to have a, have a through street that's highly utilized, but there's lots of ways to get to that back area where, where Lincoln used to be and that kind of thing. What are your thoughts about closing Lane Avenue ever?
Well, I can say it's not on council anymore. I wrote the application to close it the first time.
Okay.
From Lane College.
Okay.
Couldn't vote on it because I was an employee there.
Gotcha.
I understand, I understand Lane's concerns more than I understand, I understand, you know, emergency management's concerns where if there's an issue on Berry Street or, or Lane Avenue on the other side of Lane College, how they get through quicker. There's a lot of side streets that, that don't, that aren't as structurally sound and don't have the build outs, uh, they can't hold the weight of those emergency vehicles as well. And so, uh, I think there has to be some careful planning on the clickers, how we, how we equip our emergency management with that to be able to open the gates. And we would have to do some ready strategies and plan on how we do that. And it may be down the road that we widen and reinforce some of the other streets and make it easier for emergency.
Well, if, if J C M, you know, J C M's rebuilt, you know, obviously in that immediate area, it's, it's only gonna increase traffic in there. I mean, I, I went to J C M, I went to both campuses when I was there and, and I saw the busyness of that street. I just think it makes sense. No, no other college campus in Jackson has just a cut right through campus, hundred miles an hour, like you can kinda do there. So, I just wanna protect those students and make sure that campus is, is maintained.
Oh, and I, I've had to jump back several times when I worked there, walking across the street with a car.
I've had to stop very quickly some times.
Well, I guess my, my last, uh, main act, uh, is that, and I know that we made a commitment to, um, to Lane College and I don't know what the commitment is, I'm not talking about that thing. But, um, I would, and I, and I'm sharing this with President Hampton, uh, when I heard J C M was closing. If J C M, the old campus could be an incubator for teachers. We'd be the only one anywhere around West Tennessee that had an incubator for training teachers, which we so desperately needed. Uh, so I'm not.
You're talking, you're talking about using lanes to against on the J C M campuses.
Right, the old campus is.
Yeah.
And, and I, for one board member, does not want to see it. I, I, once I said it, that they, it was searching outlast from the community about, we want J C M right, right where it is. And I would just hate to see them spend twenty million dollars on that old campus. There's a reason we talked about utilizing the Almond Arena as a focus point for that new high school. And I just think that, um, having that, that incubator right there on the campus in West Tennessee would be the, opening the door for that. My understanding that Lane is, uh, is four years off on that first student and walking down that program when it's approved. That's a long time. But if we had, it would just be an interest in having that come in. And I know that's been talked about workforce development being in that building, but, um, I think we need to prioritize what we need to put in there. I think we got, uh, I've, I've heard, uh, some innovative ideas about the work study, workforce development, but I'd just like to see that become innovative teachers.
Yeah, I think that all comes back to what Lane College wants, right? And that, that question has to be asked to them. I know from, uh, I worked there, I worked in admissions first and loan management. If, if I had a direct feeder school right next to the campus of the college I worked at, I can just walk across the street and, and get applications? I mean, it's a no-brainer for me. Uh, I, I envied the Jackson admissions counselor because all she had to do was just walk across railroad tracks. She got two hundred applications. I had to drive to, you know, walk in and go to five schools. I mean, it's, you know. And so I think that, that's a huge opportunity, not only for the, the growth of the campus, to have that direct feeder opportunity there for, for Lane College. But the relationship that they'll have, that I know that, that Dr. Hampton will do, all the outreach he's done over the last five years. I think that'll be an amazing relationship, not only encourage the high school students, but also the, the colleges to get involved, community service. You know, opportunities for student teachers at incubator over there to get their, their learning in. I mean, it's, the possibilities for that are really endless. If you, if you get a campus there and allow that relationship to come across that railroad track.
And what's the last thing that I mentioned, pitch to, uh, Mr. Washington, about, uh, J C M would be the only, you can mention it from, I think I might. The only high school, the type of stadium, the P S State, come on, that's out there.
Madison, doesn't have to stay.
Okay, the Dallas State Building would have use of the athletic field, I understand.
Oh, at Lambeth.
Yeah, they probably do use it.
They, they currently, yeah, they use a soccer field, baseball field, softball field, yeah.
And my next point, that was the reason I was asking about that master plan, because, um, in place of building J C M on that old campus, that could be where the stadium would be. And I just imagine a homecoming game, you marching across the overpass over to the, um, football field. Then the second place would be up there on the corner of Lane Avenue and where the old, um, what was that place there? Goodwill?
Publicity.
It's on Allen, it's on Allen.
The master plan, if all of those houses, when you could drive down Howard Street and imagine seeing J C M in that background would, and so that's, that's, that would be great in the master plan.
Now, look, I know it's not great, but we were pretty proud of Rock Rock Stadium when I was there. People came to rock, they didn't even know. We liked to rock when I was a kid.
We know, and I think, you know, having that, a collaborative effort on that, I think Lane College has a master plan. If you ask Dr. Hampton where his vision is, he wants to turn on Lane Avenue off Holland, then you feel like you're on Lane's campus.
Yeah.
Um, if you have a, a J C M that's rebuilt there, that's that direct feeder for Lane College, I mean, it's just, that gives a whole feel of, of what goes on there and an educational feel of, of being on a campus. It also has a high school on it that, that works together, collaborative effort. And you still got Early College Hall over there too. I mean, that, that could be an education core to work.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and I think that, if you think about like kids from that neighborhood, a lot of the kids who go to school there live in the neighborhood, they walk to school. Imagine, I mean, I can't imagine, I, I just think it would be cool to go to high school in my neighborhood, go to college in my neighborhood. Like, that would just be unreal to me.
I can't imagine, I'm, I'm, I'm with Pete, we were living in the country, we had to drive to, to Southside.
Well, I had to drive to get to my school too, but, um, not as far as y'all had to.
I drove past Northside to get to my school.
That's right.
Uphill both ways in the snow.
Is that how you got to school more?
You have a question?
Give it. I, well, I, I was gonna ask, right, do we have, do we have any update from ethnic communities concerned?
Yeah, so I mentioned before we came, where we met, uh, last week with the administrator from, uh, Madison and some of the teachers, and then we had some other high school teachers meet to review the JCM plan and the Madison plan, and they gave us some feedback that we're getting updates on. And, um, new market tax credit, we had, um, even another company become interested in our plan as recent as, uh, two weeks ago. So they're getting information, gathering, make their decisions, so there's several entities interested in our plan and have tax credits. It's just a matter of the, the first one committing, and it's pretty much a good domino after that, hopefully.
But it is picking up a little strength.
Yeah, yeah, we got conversations going, uh, yes, it's not, it's not dead. No, no, you just won't hear until somebody commits.
Right.
There's a lot of talk in the background, but people haven't, uh, not all, uh, entities have started to commit their credits yet. We're probably six months behind based on what happened with the shutdown in January. Everything got thrown off. So where we are now, I would say we would have been in February or March. Okay, you know, that's just where we are. So where we are now, we thought we would be at this point in February and March, where we are right now. That's just the way it is.
From that kind of, how can we, as a board, help you?
Uh, I think means like this, just, just knowing that, that we can all be on the same page and talk about things, and, and kind of that collective vision and plan of, of what we can do and how we can help each other. I think that goes a, a whole lot longer way than, than anything else, just knowing that we can have these open conversations and, and discuss ideas, and, uh, have the camera right in my face.
Well, Scott, I do wanna say this. I wanna say thank you again for being a man of your word, because you said it over and over and over again during your campaign. I want a seat at the table. The city needs a seat at the table. And, I mean, I know that one, two, oh gosh, one, two, three, four, five of us just got elected last fall. Was about the time you officially launched your campaign. Kevin's been on the board two years longer than the, the five of us. I never saw Mayor Guest at any of our meetings over the last nine months. Um, he, he might have been at one of our meetings at City Hall, I could be mistaken. But, um, so thank you for being a man of your word and being willing to take time out of your day, you know.
Scott, you probably got that camera sliding right by, by yourself.
You're trying to smooth it up and put me on the spot.
Really good.
Well, Scott, I do feel like that, that this is a step in the right direction, and I think that, like, Ms. Doris asked you, like, what can we do? And you said, we can do this, and so I want you to know that we are going to do this. And I think that you, I think those of us who are sitting around the table, and even our school board members who are not here, are ready to hold you accountable to that. I think the nine of us will not have a problem holding you accountable. Uh, no, we want that, we want that.
I remember being at, uh, one of the education committee meetings with the city when Dr. Jones was here, and Randy Wallace mentioning, you know, we, we don't, he didn't say it in somebody's words, but essentially saying, we don't have to.
He said we're out of the school business.
Yeah, he did, but he, but I remember, I, I, I was there, but, but Dr. Jones backed up his chair and sat right next to him, and he said, I know you don't have to, but I'm asking you to. And so, you know, that, I, I appreciate still kind of continuing that relationship to where, we understand you might tell us no, and go away and try again, but, but just being open to listen to opportunities for you guys to inject some value is important, and we appreciate that.
So no, 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 never ask Alex questions, he'll always say no.
You know, I think, you know, if we break it down to that, that very basic principle of not being in the school business, we may not be, the city may not be, but we're in the economic development business, and schools are the cornerstone of economic development in our community, so we have to be, we have to be in the same, at the same table and walk in the same direction to make sure that happens.
I agree.
And we all are interested in seeing our young people succeed.
Sure we are.
And if we don't all work together, it won't happen.
That's right. I appreciate y'all inviting me and starting us off, and I'm, let's do it again.
I'm great.
Next time we'll meet at your place, can we do that?
Absolutely, yeah, welcome to my place.
Dinner?
You're barbecuing around together.
Doris, you said what I was thinking.
One thing I like, um, something to mention, uh, Scott, one of the things that we, talking about, first of all, one of the things I think that, uh, would support our students and help economics, uh, in the city is the track, the physical track.
I agree.
Uh, about money, and bringing those.
I ain't bring my chip.
Coming in white, while you're talking about that track we talked about in, uh, this, in Mr. Washington.
Yeah.
Um, that we could, it wasn't enough room, you told me it wasn't enough room, uh, in Liberty, for that eight lane track. We talked about a grand opportunity in the scheme of things when, when the new JCM is built.
Yeah.
Uh, that can be a partnership with the city because of the fact it's gonna be bringing revenue dollars in, uh, when they come in for those tournaments, so that, that's something. There's several ideas we've talked about behind Madison, maybe that could be a stadium in a track area to continue that attraction of Lane Avenue, being a big campus for Lane, JCM all the way through, where you have the stadium right there by Madison, you have early college, maybe that convenience store one day kind of disappears. But then you got JCM and Lane, you know, that whole thing changes. Pull Alexander in it, which is right around the street from it, you got a whole educational corridor from pre-K to college all the way through there.
I'm not committing anything, but.
That is the vision out there.
I think having, I think having a track like that in the center of the city was such a bigger draw than having it out.
Well, and that's the point where we have so many youth events now with sports that we can't accommodate on our fields, because we don't have enough.
Right.
So for a facility like that in the middle of the city that would not only be used for schools, but for youth events, Saturday events, evening events, family events, would be awesome to have it right there, right off of Howard.
I can tell you right now, we're, we're getting national books now, y'all, y'all been watching the tournament, the underdogs.
Yeah.
Um, they, Dexter mentioned this morning that we have possibly have an opportunity to host one of the rounds here in Jackson next year. So we're gonna have ESPN over here in, in Jackson.
We better shine it up.
Yeah.
But no, those are the kind of things that, you know, would help everybody. You had a school would use it, JCM would use it, but everybody would use it. You had a track, and that brings money into the city every time, nothing else, the restaurants.
We talked long range about a multipurpose.
Right, facility.
Which like what, uh, Memphis turned into, to the Coliseum, turning, turning something into a multipurpose, if you're doing something like that, um.
So, I mean, it's there.
Long range.
It's there, but it, the potential's there, a lot of potential.
I think that's a great idea.
A lot of potential there.
We gotta, we gotta put that power over there.
I gotta fill out some roofs. I got roofs to patch.
I'm just excited now that Mayor Conger said we're gonna have a track.
Now, now Doris, we just gotta figure out, we, you and I think could get together and figure out how we could convince Mayor Conger to pay for that track.
Right.
Uh, we go, we go keep working together, it's a big, it's a big deal.
And so the two of y'all need to run with Barbara to the meeting next time.
We will.
Nancy?
I'm good. I just wanna thank the mayor again for coming, and I thank you for, uh, the fact that y'all have got behind the Madison and, and wanna fund that school and help the school system, uh, and, and I think that's just a wonderful thing that y'all do, and I appreciate you.
And thank you for having a good sense of humor.
Gotta have fun with you. I appreciate y'all, thanks so much.